All right, it is 7:00 on Thursday, July 11th. This is the regular city council meeting for the city of Alvernet. We will go ahead and call this meeting to order. And if you'll please join me, we'll start with the pledge of allegiance. The pledge of allegiance to the republic, to which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next item is rule call. Councilor Trump. Councilor Bozenberg.
Present.
Councilor Sukup.
Present.
Councilor West.
Present.
And Councilor Myers.
Present.
With the record reflect that we do have a quorum to conduct business tonight. With that, I would seek a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Myers. Second by Bozenberg. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay, motion carries. Agenda approved. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing for the amendment to the city of Alvernet zoning map. Do we have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Moved by West. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Sukup. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Oppose nay. Motion carries, and the public hearing is open at 7:01 PM. So we did receive a request from Dan Sherman, property owner, for three properties in town to have those rezoned. We talked about this at the May meeting, I believe. So if this is, anyone that has questions, concerns, comments, your opportunity to speak, this was posted around town in three locations, plus at City Hall, and it was published in the paper that we would be having the public hearing tonight. Any questions from the public, comments? Questions or comments from council? All right, we did not receive any written correspondence either at City Hall, so with that, I would seek a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing?
Motion by Bozenberg. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Myers. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion carries, the public hearing is closed at 7:02 PM. That moves us on to the sheriff's report, page 2 of your packet. So for, from June 13th to July 11th, the 43 hours were met with a total calls for service of four. So it was a quiet month for, oh, I'm not supposed to say that word. It was, that's a short report. That's a short report from our sheriff. I will be following up with them. We got a resident come in with questions about enforcement of the jake brake or engine brake ordinance. We do have several semis coming in, both north and south, that consistently utilize their engine brake, and so I'll follow up with the sheriff and see what, if they enforce that, or if that's like a DMV thing, and how we get somebody to maybe patrol for that. Otherwise, if you have anything for our sheriff partners, you can send it my way, and we'll make sure it gets to them. All right. Next item on the agenda are citizen comments. We have two types of comments in the city of Alvernet, those for agenda-related items and non-agenda-related items. If you have any comments, we ask that you state your name and address for the record, and you have five minutes to speak. So if there are any comments on agenda-related items. Hearing none, non-agenda-related items?
I have two I want to talk about.
Okay.
See, Graham, 200 nail drive. At the end of Donald Drive, in the nail addition, people are using our land to take a shortcut. I put a trail cam up last year, and I got a million golf carts, people walking their dogs, people walking their, all the time. Is there something we can put at the end of that street to keep people from walking on my property?
You could put something on your property. I don't know if we put anything on the streets, we don't want to limit where we can push snow.
Well, you can't push on my property anyway.
Well, but if I, so, but I can't put anything on your property, so you're asking me to
But if you get right to the end of the street...
That's what I'm saying, then I can't push snow to, all the way to the end of the street.
So I can put a fence across there, no problem?
Yeah.
On property line?
With permission from neighboring, you know, three feet off the property line.
How about just the city street area?
What's that?
How about just the city street area?
I'd have to pull up a map to see where the lines are.
Oh, I've got those too. I don't have them far. I've gotten 40, 50 people walking up and down there, or golf carts.
Yeah.
I mean...
Yeah, I don't know. Do you have it marked anywhere?
I don't. Somebody mows it too, and I need to figure out, I think it's the people right there.
Okay.
But I just was told about it, and I put a trail cam up last year. I talked to Chris about it last year, and that's all the farther it went. But I think we need to do something at the end of the street to, I know at the end of Donald Drive, on Bozenberg's side, there's, used to be three signs there, but I think golf carts still get around it, people still walk around it, but...
So is there, oh, the little...
The little diamond?
Diamond thing. That used to be, I don't know if it's still there or not, or, I have no idea.
No, there's nothing down there.
Is there nothing now?
I mean, we, we couldn't, I don't know if that entirely solves the problem. That was probably, yeah.
And those signs would just designate that that's the end of the pavement?
Yeah.
Yeah, one time there was a load of sand on my property, and I don't know who that was, and if it's still there or not, or...
Well, I do think the load of sand is right at the end of the street. Yeah, I could get it on a future agenda if council wanted to put the little diamonds up to indicate where the end of city property is. But on the other end, that's not a through, or that's not street for us, I wouldn't imagine we do. South, so it's the property that abuts the city shop.
It's in the, to the tower back there.
Yeah, to the west figure.
Yeah.
Property. So they cut the street across there?
There's going down the gravel, rather than they cut across to that street.
Yeah, I could put it on a future agenda.
Or have the sheriff's police sit too, there in town?
I can ask.
I mean, I don't know.
Yeah, if you want signage, we can put it on a future agenda. I can make the sheriff aware that that's private property. They don't, yeah.
I have signs, I just haven't had a chance to put them up yet.
I think that might be more of the voices you'd start.
Can I just put them right, right in the middle of the drive of the street? Two signs saying no trespassing? Three feet off? I don't know, they'll still go around there.
They may still go around there, yeah.
Well, we have...
I mean, I have girls that aren't holding up the driveway golf carts, waving at the camera on it.
Yeah. That's its back away.
Off the street itself. The city has roughly 21 feet from the end of the pavement to what appears to be the property line, so we wouldn't put anything right at the end of the pavement. But yeah, you could put signage right on the property line. Any kind of fencing on the property line would have to, if it's on the property line, it needs to have approval from the neighboring, but that's on...
It's on the city street.
It's on the city street, yeah, so as long as you didn't go all the way down with it, then the fence could be on the property line.
I mean, that was nice enough with the neighbors tear out the fence line, and then they mill half my property.
So, does that help?
Well, you're rural. And I'll be back next month.
What's the other item?
The second is, I sent you an email on June 17th, and never got a response back from you?
Yep. I, I do apologize for not responding, we've hired new staff, been busy. I did, I did talk to the, it is, we've had a lot going on, so I did talk to the chief, and I can either, chief and I can respond. That is fire department business, so I wouldn't say that necessarily falls on a city agenda, but I, I will, I can get your response.
But you're in charge of the fire department.
But it's fire department policy.
Yeah. But you made the policy, and you kicked my son off, not the fire department policy.
So I did talk to the chief regarding your email, so just for everyone's information, do you want, would you like to please let everyone know what the questions are?
Yep. So it said, Mayor, on Saturday, June 8th, Center Point Ambulance had their fundraiser. Some of the Alvernet Fire Department members came over, they drove two apparatuses over to the event. One was an engine, and the other was their medical truck that left the district. What would happen if there was a call, and they were delayed by 15, 20 minutes? Getting there. Anyways, two people I don't name had their kids in their truck, in the truck, the fire truck. I thought from years past, there was no one allowed in the fire trucks, speaking from personal experience. It was a couple years ago, due to insurance reasons, no one but the department members should be riding in the fire trucks, after I, I'll just do the rest, I don't, I don't care about the rest anymore, but I'm just concerned about people riding in the fire truck when we got kicked off for it, and now you're letting it slide.
So I did speak with the chief, this was a planned PR event, there were contingencies in place, both for the medical truck leaving the district, or for having both trucks at the parade, as well as having the passengers, and I have...
This was done before the event?
Yes. Yes, this was in place, it was communicated what trucks were going to the event, so the department was, everyone on the department was aware, and we are going to work up formalizing a parade policy for the department.
Okay, three questions. Jackson and I are on Center Point Ambulance. Is he allowed to go into the building if there was a call there? If on the properties, you're not allowed on the properties, so I'm just curious what happens if we're on call, and we get a call at the fire station by chance?
If he's responding, then yes. Because then other members will be there, I mean, I assume, does Center Point have codes to get in?
No.
So he'd be let in the building?
Yeah.
Yes.
But he's not allowed in the property unless it's a public event, that's not a public event. He's not allowed in premises.
I would say in that instance, if he is in an official capacity, where he is responding, and that call has been made from the fire department, the expectation is that the ambulance was asked to respond. There are therefore people there that would be allowing entrance for emergency personnel.
Jackson will make it clear so that we're...
I appreciate that.
I don't want to get him in trouble for responding to a call. Now what would happen, ah, I won't worry about that, I'll look that up later. I'm good.
Okay. Any other comments or non-agenda-related items? All right. Hearing none, we'll move on to the mayor's report. First and foremost, I would like to welcome Vicki Kula as our new city clerk. So she started on June 24th, and has been forehead-deep in learning all the things about our city finances, working with our vendors, getting access to everything, and just doing an incredible job of really digging in, so I appreciate you, and thanks for being here tonight. And then Mac and Eileen as well. Okay, so it was on the last agenda, as far as helping keep the temporary position open through the end of the term, which I think is sometime in September. And one of those is for record retention purposes. Please note, we're starting to get rid of boxes, so that project is well underway, and it's super exciting. I have an update, we have two properties that currently are under abatement for nuisance, both of which, it was in my last, one of my reports, maybe in May, we talked about, they had a hearing at the end of April, we got default judgment from that hearing, neither of those properties are in compliance, there is a follow-up hearing on August 12th for both of those properties, so more information to come there, but we are still pursuing bringing those into compliance. One thing I hope to accomplish within the next couple of days, so that we have for our August meeting, is the bids for the generator for the fire station and wellhouse 3. So we're posting that, and opening that up, and then we have to allow two weeks for those bids to come in, and then we can look to award that at the August meeting, so that's very exciting. ECI cog has been a huge help, as well as the city of Ely. I've reached out to their city administrator a couple of times, because they received the same grant for the same purpose, and so they've shared some documentation with us, so excited to get that moving forward. And then last on my report, speaking of grants, we did get notified that we received the Wellmark Three Point Play Grant. Some of you might recall, we've received this once before. So this is, the last time it was advertised during a you-and-I football game, and you could text in the name of your town, and then they, they took the top, so many recipients, I'm not sure how this one was advertised or distributed, but Mac received kind of an out-of-nowhere email, and so that was, it's super exciting. So $16,580. It has to be used towards things for, that will encourage activity within the city, so playgrounds, trails, those types of things, but I think with our new park project, we shouldn't have any trouble spending that money, and, yeah, so...
Does it have an expiration date on those funds?
I'm sure there is, we haven't actually received a whole lot of documentation yet, they said they'd be in contact with us in the coming weeks, so. They sent us a quick FAQ, which, again, we've received this once before, so we kind of knew how the money had to be spent, but yeah, I'm not sure on what the timeline is yet, so... All right, and that is my mayor's report. Next, council comments, I'll start with Councilor Myers.
No.
Councilor West?
None at this time.
Councilor Sukup?
No.
Councilor Bozenberg?
No.
Councilor Trump?
Just golf carts, when young kids are kind of getting to be all the problem, I think.
Is that something you'd like me to mention to the sheriff?
I think that'd be good, I don't know if he's going to catch anybody, but there's, they, somebody, well, I'm getting old enough, these kids look pretty young.
I don't think you're wrong, by the way.
All right. Back to our agenda, item number 10, written reports, and we'll start with Chief Hoover, his report is on page 3. Anything to add?
No, it's a fairly short report, but later in your agenda, we've got two new members to approve, we recommended those two, and continuing to grow. And then, just generally, I mean, we got a new city clerk, and just kind of refresh our methods of purchasing and reimbursements and that, and we'll work with her on that. In the meantime, we've had a few things that are fairly urgent to replace, O2 bottles to fill, and some medication supplies, and EMS, and so. I mentioned before, I keep watching the clock, it'll run here pretty quick, but Brian and TJ would be the ones that would probably be working closer with purchasing on a daily basis, large items, agenda items, then I'll get more directly involved with council on those, but, so unless you have questions for me, other questions?
I do, for you, just quick, I talked to Mac the other day, we were down looking at the trailer, the old trailer, beside the shed down there, and there's some stuff in there, there's mold tanks, air packs, a bunch of stuff that's, could you get with him and see what we can do with that?
Yeah.
Because I'm sure it's, they're no good, but, you know, there's a bunch of stuff in there that, you know, could get it cleaned up, if it's not good.
We did move the old fire truck up to the station and get that out, and noticed there are some items in there at that time, but yeah, I had to refresh my memory on...
There's aluminum ladders up there, and all that kind of stuff, so, no. Usually maybe you can get rid of it, like salmon or something, you know, so. But anyway, check with Mac if you could.
Okay. That's all I have.
And then TJ did drop off, what do you mean, for, is it the Firehouse Subs Grant?
Yes.
Yep, okay, I couldn't remember if it was the volunteer firefighter or the Firehouse Subs.
No, Firehouse Subs.
So we'll start working on that as well, pulling that together.
The DNR grant, we finally got the last piece of equipment that was ordered, but that should have been all taken care of with the state, and I assumed that the city got reimbursed that amount for that grant.
I can, see if I can find it.
Working on another grant that has no matching funds, have, don't have that submitted yet, John Leach is putting that together with another group of committee, small committee doing that, but we'll need to make sure it's items that per our donation agreement that we signed quite a while ago, between the association and the city, the items that the city accepts, so. I'll get that information to you.
Sounds good.
And then, if there's questions down the line on agenda items, I'm going to leave the room here.
All right. He's not going to leave.
Sorry, I'm going to run this time, so.
No worries, thank you.
Thank you, thanks, ma'am.
Any other questions for the fire department? Hearing none, we'll move on to public works. This is on page 14. And we'll recognize Mac.
I just had a couple things to add, we started our off-season discharge of the lagoons this morning, Kenny and I are working with the DNR to set up a sampling schedule, trying to minimize our trips to Waterloo, because off-season, you have to sample a lot more frequently than a regular discharge. And I picked up the posts and signs for the crosswalk systems today, so hopefully I'm going to start working on the one closest to the school first, while we're waiting for the concrete work to be done, get that one installed first, and see how it goes. That's all I have to add that happened today, if there's any questions, any answer?
You may mention a replacement fire hydrant, do we need to have anything, a motion to get that started, or is that something off his discretion, or?
So...
Does that, I thought we had that kind of in a budget, didn't we, to replace them every, so often?
We do have those budgeted, so the way that we're going to handle that is, we, when we publish our minutes, anything that we're looking to put out to bid, we include that underneath the minutes when we publish in the paper, and then we'll post it around town, that we're going out to bid for these things, and so hopefully we'll have quotes by next month's meeting. So anything that's not urgent, we intend to continue to work that way, just to give a fair shot at the work. And then, speaking of, Mac does have a couple of things on the agenda, so we can talk about those as we get down.
We don't have anything digging out there anymore, do we?
Up the lagoons, I actually, I filled holes today, critter holes, I took three loads at the side-by-side out there, and there was quite a few.
Quite a few, doesn't fresh?
Not really, no, just got it cleaned up, and looking better, so the DNR shows back up, they're happy with it. And we did have, everyone in the report, we did have issues with well pump 2, I'm working on getting some numbers together on what it would take to get that inspected and look at, we're past due on, as far as inspections for, for well pump 1 and 2.
Oh, and fair call-out, so, I mean, tell them what Kenny said. Potential price tag on that.
Oh, they, Center Point had a well go down, and he hasn't given me the official number, but I mean, it's been 20 years since those pumps have been pulled out of the ground, or probably going to be substantial $40,000, I would guess at least. I mean, I haven't gotten a budget number yet, hopefully by next meeting, I'll have some more rough numbers, but I'm sure there'll be repair work to the pumps, and what, and motor, and replacing pipe, and inspections, they're going to, they would cam, camera the well, make sure everything's sufficient, that's what they've said down at Center Point.
Yeah, we have the lift pump 2 that was going bad, or something?
Yeah, that's an agenda item.
That's a...
This is the well pump.
Yeah, this is for the drinking water.
So we've got two of them that seem to be past when they should have been inspected, and so we're hoping if we can at least do one this year, and then plan for one next year, depending on where those quotes come in.
The Center Point works with Northway Well Pump, Well Pump Company, and they have reform files, they repaired well 3, 4, or so few years ago, too, and they're highly recommended, so that's what I'm starting to work with, as far as numbers, and go from there.
Any suggestions on how we do this, or not go so far with the regular maintenance, regular recommended maintenance, 10 years later?
Tom said, that we just run Northway, he recommends they have them inspected and pulled out of the ground every seven to 10 years, and...
Yeah, so does he just give you a call every so often, or?
I don't know if they have a service agreement or something like that, they might.
Turnover and things, it's easy to forget those kinds of things.
I can ask him about that, they have a contract that we can, so that we don't forget in the future.
And questions? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to the clerk's report. Again, welcome. I told her she didn't have to do one, I told her she got a newbie pass on her first clerk's report, but she went and didn't anyway, so. Spending a lot of time just getting access to everything, getting new IDs set up, getting insurance and everything straightened out, but I think we're making headway. Any questions on the clerk's report? You do also have a treasurer's report, and the profit and loss, we'll start with the treasurer's report, and notice that goes through June 30th, so one thing, we are still working with clerk books on how to get the new budget entered into the system, so we don't actually have it in there yet, so any report we gave you is going to just show a lot of negative numbers, but we've got an appointment next week, so they should be able to help us get, once they show us where to start plugging numbers in, that should go pretty quickly, and we'll have FY '25 ready to roll. And then of note on the profit and loss, so again, this is for last fiscal year, so it runs through June. The third column over, the over-budget, is where we wanted to see negative numbers The third column over, the over budget, is where we wanted to see negative numbers specifically under expenses. So these are our highest level categories, your public safety, public works, culture and rec, those types of things. You'll notice that we did a really good job of staying under budget. We did go over for the community and economic development. That is the fund where our TIF payments come out of. And the TIF schedule got renegotiated with the developer. Once we, we've actually collected all of the TIF money, and so we're able to pay it out a little bit faster and just kind of get it off our books. But the budget didn't get adjusted for that. And so I did talk to Connie from Walker. She says, as long as we can kind of explain what happened, there's just not much more we can do with that, so. That's where that one is, but again, we have all the TIF funding, it's just it wasn't necessarily budgeted for the payout schedule. And then you will notice that we are still, we appear to be over by fifty-five thousand in debt service. We are not. You all approved the budget transfers at the last meeting. Again, we're waiting on clerk book support to actually make those transfers in the system. So it was, it was approved in FY twenty-four, so we can, we can make those effective FY twenty-four. So that one is also good, but otherwise, across the board, we were able to remain under budget, so that was a good news story. Any questions for clerk or on the treasury report? All right, with that, I would seek a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Sukup. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Myers. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That motion carries. You're back just in time. New business. Item A is a special event permit for Nancy Fuller for August twenty-fourth. So this starts on page twenty-four of your packet. I do believe, do we have one in here? Is this an updated one or did we not have?
I wanted to explain both of them.
Okay.
You should have two of them. Do you, did you get the?
We got the original, yep, that, yep.
So, am I up?
Yep, it's all you.
Okay, have you guys heard of Kyle's Mile? Okay, so Kyle's Mile came about by a fourteen-year-old kid that committed suicide. And his dad created Kyle's Mile. And it's a bunch of people, yes, mainly motorcycles, but they're gonna have a Jeep club this year. And there's a lot of people that follow on vehicles. And they charge per person for registration, and it all goes to Boys Count, a suicide hotline. And they're coming to Fuller's this year, and they came here a couple of years ago, they came to Gibbys. And I don't think the road was closed then. And I just think it's a really good idea to just have a spot for them to go as best that we can. So there's not people going everywhere and just trying to keep a little bit of smoothness to it. So my first thing was, well, the detour. We'll keep the detour the same regardless, so. Coming back up. Can I borrow your guys' signs?
Anytime a road is closed, yes.
Thank you.
So, provide the signage.
The detour to stop right here, go around the block up, up right beside this north side of the convenience store, and then back down Main Street, so they don't have to take the little side road right there and everything. So that's the detour. I can even put the signs up if you guys drop them off the night before.
Quick question before we go to that. So you do have hours of use, eleven to twelve. Is that AM to PM?
No, that is one hour.
Correct, so eleven AM to twelve PM, so it's just the one.
Eleven AM to noon.
Okay.
Okay. So originally, I wanted to cut it off at the street in front of the post office. And then on that side of the bank's driveway, kitty-cornered this way, because the bank is open till eleven-thirty. And I don't want to ask them to close for half an hour for something that's that short. And then I was talking to Byron, and he was telling me how many bikes and Jeeps and all of this that are gonna be there. So that's what the next map is. If I could do it a little different and kind of put the barricades to, to block it off after the two-way. Like right out here, it's only a two-way. So to leave the two-way open, but once the road widens enough to block it out and over, so we can have this part, part of this street too, up this far. Does that make any sense? So they can still get in and out of the bank, but there isn't four lanes all the way across. They'll use the two lanes on each side.
And block those off.
I'll leave it open for the bank.
Yeah.
And I'll make a sign that says bank will be till eleven-thirty.
Bring your map a little closer so I can see it.
Here, she gave us a copy, made scans of that.
So the red is, is kind of how I would do the barricades. And then once, at eleven-thirty, once the bank closed, then I just pull it straight across, so we still didn't have traffic coming in. And to put a beer tank right out front of our door, if you guys got that one?
Yes, we got that one.
And then here in the alley, but that doesn't really matter, but right out here in front of the door. I think that's it. Any questions for me?
When is that?
August twenty-fourth, about Saturday.
Yes.
What kind of traffic is that over there?
Over two hundred motorcycles. And at least...
And a few Jeeps.
Yeah, twenty to thirty Jeeps.
You've had events on that scale before, though, haven't you?
Yes. I blocked off more of the road back then, but...
This works.
Yeah, it's kind of what I thought. They usually find a place if there's no place to park. I didn't want to overwhelm all the side streets, though.
Okay, any other questions for Nancy? We have any security? I know it's only an hour, but they're expecting two hundred bikes.
This is their first stop. And Byron, before we ever leave, Byron talks to the entire crowd. And there's never been any issues. Cops have never been called. I think there's been one accident in ten years. So I don't, I don't expect problems.
That's nothing your private security would mess with anyways, so.
And there's enough of them, they would take care of any issues going on with somebody else, if there was.
Any other questions for Nancy? I know she's gotta get back across the street, so. All right, if not, I'd seek a motion to approve the special event permit for Kyle's Mile on August twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-four, from, with the road closure from eleven AM to noon. So moved by Myers. Do I have a second? Second by Bosenberg. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That motion carries.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Item B, Resolution twenty-two-four dash twenty-two, which is the corporate bank authorization. So this is a resolution establishing corporate bank authorization, whereas the City Council of the City of Albernat, Iowa acknowledges the following bank changes, and whereas Farmer State Bank shall update authorization to reflect changes noted within, and whereas the following individuals are authorized to sign warrants or checks and documents on behalf of the City of Albernat. It is Bethany Sarzen as the mayor, Chris Myers as mayor pro tem. And whereas the following individuals are authorized to make changes to credit cards on behalf of the City of Albernat, Bethany Sarzen as mayor, Chris Myers as mayor pro tem. And whereas the following individuals are authorized to access the City of Albernat's safe deposit box, Bethany Sarzen mayor, Chris Myers mayor pro tem, and Vicki Kula as the city clerk. Just to be clear, the only change here is to the, that last statement to add Vicki as city clerk. But it's just easy to give them kind of a fresh resolution to go off of, so they don't have to reference two for the other authorizations. So now therefore be resolved by the City Council of the City of Albernat, Iowa, that the aforementioned changes to authorization of the City of Albernat's bank accounts and safe deposit box at Farmer State Bank be in effect upon the adoption of this resolution. Any questions? Hearing none, I would seek a motion to approve Resolution twenty-two-four dash twenty-two.
I think a motion to approve Resolution twenty-four dash twenty-two.
Motion by Bosenberg. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Trum. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That motion carries. The next is the first reading of Ordinance twenty-two-four dash three, amending the City of Albernat zoning map. So I'm going to read this one as well. Ordinance amending the City of Albernat zoning map, whereas the property owner, Dan Sherman Enterprises LLC, has petitioned the City of Albernat for a change in the zoning district to accommodate a housing project at the following addresses, one thirty-third street, two oh-six Roosevelt Street, and two twelve Roosevelt Street. And whereas the City of Albernat Planning and Zoning Commission has previously considered the zoning change and has recommended the proposed zoning amendment to the City of Albernat zoning ordinance. And whereas a public hearing was held on July eleventh, twenty-twenty-four regarding the present zoning amendment ordinance, at which time parties in interest and citizens were given an opportunity to be heard. Now therefore be ordained by the City Council of the City of Albernat, Iowa, that section one, the zoning ordinance, an official zoning map of the City of Albernat, Iowa, as set forth in chapter one sixty-five of the Code of Ordinances, is hereby amended by changing the zoning classification and zoning district in the city's official zoning map for the properties legally described below. I included the parcel numbers as well as the legal descriptions for those three properties. Two of those, the one thirty-third street, two oh-six Roosevelt Street, are going from R-one to R-two. And two twelve Roosevelt Street will be going from R-one to M-one, which is multifamily. So it is the intention of the council that each section, paragraph, sentence, clause, and provision of this ordinance is separable, and if any provision is held unconstitutional or invalid for any reason, such decision shall not affect the remainder of this ordinance, nor any part thereof, other than that provision affected by such decision. Section three, all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict with any provisions of this ordinance are hereby repealed. And then section four, this ordinance shall become effective after its final passage approval and publication as provided by law. Any questions? So if you'll recall, this is in regards to Dan's project that he is currently seeking grant funding for, where he would build the accessory units, which are basically apartments above the garage units at one thirty-third street and two oh-six Roosevelt. And then I believe it's a four-plex at two twelve Roosevelt.
Preliminary plans back in a previous packet?
Yes, he was, they were at the, in the May packet, yep. All right. If there are no other questions, I would seek a motion to approve the first reading of Ordinance twenty-two-four dash three.
Move we approve Ordinance twenty-two-four dash three, the rezoning.
Motion by West. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Trum. Because this is an ordinance, we will do roll call. It's Counselor Bosenberg?
Yes.
Counselor Myers?
Yes.
Counselor Sukup?
Yeah.
Counselor Trum?
Yes.
Counselor West?
Yes.
All those in favor, so that motion passes. I would recommend, so because it's an ordinance, again, we do the three readings. Because it's zoning, I would recommend we at least do the second reading at our next meeting, and then we can decide whether we want to waive the third. Dan has already applied for the grant funding, and all we had to do was provide the timeline for what it would take to get the rezoning finalized. I provided the timeline as if we had done all three readings, so we're not in, we're not in any kind of hurry. They just needed to know that, what that would look like, so. So unless I receive a motion otherwise to waive the second and third readings. All right, we will move on to item D, new Fire Department member applications. This is page thirty-three of your packet. So there are two new individuals recommended by the chief. Any questions? If not, I would seek a motion to accept the new Fire Department member applications for Sydney Gaddis and Tyler Hanson.
So moved.
Moved by Sukup. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Trum. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That motion carries. All right, item thirty, or item E, page thirty-four, the Fire Department swimming pool filling request. So this is something that we put in place several years ago, because we were getting a lot of requests, and it, we had had a no swimming pool filling policy in place. And then we, and then everyone put in pools before we could do this, and I don't think we've ever used it. So we received two requests this year and got some feedback that the fee might be a little bit high. So one of them was, how many gallons did he need? Twenty thousand?
I believe it was twenty-five, twenty-eight thousand gallons.
So it was gonna be close to...
It was gonna be more than the pool was.
It was gonna be close to two thousand dollars for us to truck water out there with how it's, how the filling request is currently set up. So the Fire Department has asked, there's good PR in it, and most people are generous. So we do have an update here. I have the original one, and so I can show you the comparison. The first sentence, the only thing we changed is then that first paragraph. So the first sentence is the same, that the, we requested two hundred and fifty dollar fee for swimming pool, for filling swimming pools. And then the cost includes six thousand gallons of water, so that stays the same. If additional water is requested, a voluntary donation would be appreciated to cover filling costs. Whereas before, we had it actually set for each additional trip, it was two hundred and fifty dollar fee for each additional truckload of water. So there may be a compromise in between. We could do fifty, we could do, but the, the two fifty for each load was prohibitive. I don't, did you guys end up doing the one that was?
Um, one, he wasn't gonna be able to afford it, but he also had to rip in the wire, so.
And then the other one was in town? Did we do that one off the hydrant? Or, no, they only needed the six thousand gallons.
Yeah, yeah, it was a short amount.
So, or counsel can choose to leave it as is, but...
So in terms of swimming pools, what is the average swimming pool in terms of volume, like, in whole?
Uh, you know, from what I know, it's anywhere from eight thousand to twenty-eight thousand. Twenty-eight would be approximately a thirty-foot pool. And our trucks, right now, our apparatus is only hold, most, I believe it's twelve fifty, one thousand two hundred fifty gallons, in one vehicle.
And that's actually what we haul water out? If you can just tap into a hydrant, it's a lot easier.
Yes. The, uh, the two requests that we got were out in town, just outside of town.
Wouldn't they have a well outside of town?
Yeah, they don't want to drain it.
Wouldn't they even want to drain the well?
And it does give some of the members experience on running a pump and exercises our pumps as well on the fire department side of things, so. Because if those seals, those seals can dry out.
Yeah.
And if we're running water through them, then that also kind of helps with preventative failures down the road. But it was, this was brought to me, so I brought it up on cost-wise, so.
And to my knowledge, um, again, I think we put this in place in 2020. I don't know if we've received a request.
I don't think so, no.
Since then. And we just happened to get two this year. So it's not something we're doing every week, but.
So it would, as it stands right now, it's 250 per trip?
Yes, well-
After the initial 6,000?
So we could be consistent and do 250 for every 6,000 gallons. All we can haul is 12, a little over 1,200.
1,200, that's like-
I mean, what would it cost just as far as our pumping costs? You know, obviously 28,000 gallons. I'm thinking my, my, my bills for 4,74,000 gallons, a hundred bucks. Times seven, maybe 700 bucks or something like that. And you don't want to give the water away.
No.
And, you know, I mean, it's good training, if that's what, well, work, good training, the wear and tear on the vehicles, but it's also good for those, so.
Can I speak quickly? To be fair, years ago, we had somebody, we hauled water out for their pool, and I'm like, give me a donation, and he went off, what, like, the water bill had been, and gave us like 75 bucks. So you kind of got to watch what you're doing there. I mean, I gave you donation, and it's only 50 bucks. I mean, that's not worth it.
That, that would be much-
Would two, would 250 per 6,000? Is that fair? Cause I mean, with, it's like 50 bucks per trip, if it holds like 1,200. We give five trips, 50 bucks apiece, or about 250. What if we just said, you know, minimum of 250 and 50 dollars per trip after that? Covering your gas.
Oh, depends on how far you go.
Hey, people who are putting these pools in aren't putting these pools in because they're just scraping out.
Yep, the pool itself, there's, yeah, there's an investment.
I have one, it's 18,000 gallons. So it's not a huge pool, but it keeps the grandkids happy. And I didn't call Albernat to fill it. I filled it out of our own well. It's just an idea. Everybody's got different size, depending on what they need for their family, is what's going on.
But I think I like keeping the 250 and 6,000 in there as sort of a, sort of a minimum. I guess we'll be taking that truck out of service for a while, arranging for personnel to be.
What would you have suggested for additional cost on that then?
50 per trip. She says 1,250 is what's, um.
With your largest available.
Okay.
I see down quite a bit, it was, because it was 250 for each additional truckload in the current policy, so.
Yeah, I mean, that's 250 for 6,000. That's, I think that's a good start, but with the 50 per gallon, or 50 per trip. Then you can kind of, it's easier to measure.
Well, that's what I'm saying. This was 250 for 6,000, then we had 250 for each trip, so.
For each additional trip, yeah.
Yeah, and that's very, was a little steep, so.
But I'm just doing that based on the math of our initial, of our initial offering. I don't know in terms of how much cost, wear and tear, gas, um, is involved, and if we need to put any type of caveat in here about how far.
Oh, radius, yeah, that's probably a good call.
Oh. Yeah. I know it's probably not cheap to haul, you know, 1,200 gallons of water.
So how far away do you have to haul water to fills on a, a pool, or in this case instance?
Uh, I don't know. Yeah, maybe at most.
Okay.
Yeah, the one I know about, I don't, I don't know the, the one that you actually filled.
That one was on, um, Kubler, or Fleuryville, sorry.
So that was probably five miles.
About three or four miles.
Yeah, the other one was probably only a mile and a half out of town.
Yeah, the other one was on North Marion Road.
Probably good to put a radius around how far we'll truck it.
Yeah.
And at least it's, takes the guesswork out of whoever, you know, requests it. You know, you don't have to say, well, we've done this one before, you have to say, you're in the 105, seven miles.
If you're within five miles of the fire department, something like that. How many gallons was that pool?
The one that we initially got a request for him was, uh, 28,000.
28,000.
TJ, why don't you and I take this back, and we'll put a little pen to paper on it, and see what cost is to truck it, and cost of water, and.
Yeah, do that.
Yeah, that's just one.
I mean, I'm kind of like your attitude, you know, for 6,000 gallons, or X, or 250 dollars for the 6,000 gallons, if you kind of keep that rate up, take a look at it, see how, how close that comes.
And then the other thing is, um, is this, is it the same for hydrant? Or, or trucks? Like, if we're pumping from a hydrant?
I think we've just done the 250s. We don't have a way to measure. I mean, I guess we know how big the pool is, but.
Yeah, I just didn't know if, if you can run a hose from hydrant, obviously, that's a different scenario. If we needed a different tier for that, just to make it more conducive to the people who actually live in town. Cause like you said, you know, if, if there's less wear and tear of, of just, you know, hooking a hose to a hydrant, then, you know, there's no reason to charge as much for that. But my, my biggest concern in terms of cost is, is covering the cost of getting that stuff out there and giving it back, and, and the wear and tear, and mileage on, on the trucks.
We'll do some fine tuning and bring it back. That takes us to item F, Resolution 2024-23, approving the plat of Bachelor Durr Farms, second addition to Lynn County. So this has been brought to us because they are within the two-mile radius. So this is on North Marion Road between White Road and Arabian Road, looks like. They're splitting off a two-acre lot. Generally, we just consider whether, whether there'd be any impact if the city ever needed to expand. They don't foresee us getting quite that far out. Any questions on this? Just so you guys know, I did review the ordinances, because it does say that all plaits have to be approved, reviewed and approved by Planning and Zoning Commission. There is a stipulation in there that if the city is accepting responsibility for things like streets or infrastructure, that's when planning and zoning gets involved. So just, you know, um, these that are outside, and the city is not accepting ownership of anything, the council can take action. There are no questions. I would seek a motion to approve Resolution 2024-23. Moved by Trum, do I have a second? Second by Bosenberg, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? That motion carries. Brings us to page 38. And we are on 12G, which is the lift station pump replacement, and I will recognize Mac.
Yeah, um, so Quality Flow Systems is who we contract with to do our service for lift stations. They come out once a year and pull the pumps and inspect them. And, uh, when they did it this year, pump one was in very poor condition. They weren't able to get it, they pulled it out of the ground, and there's several things wrong with it, so that we had to put in our spare pump that we keep in the shop. We have a brand new one on hand. So they took it back and tore it apart and diagnosed it, and so then they gave me a quote to repair or just replace it. Um, the one, the old one is 22 years old, it's from 2002. It's old, and it's my understanding it's been rebuilt before, so. And I would recommend just getting a new one, a brand new one, and it's got better technology and just, for that kind of price, I, I think it would be better to have a new one, to have on hand in case another pump goes down.
Cause there are two pumps in that hole, and the other ones?
There's two pumps, and they, they alternate together. And the other one's from 2018. The pump two is from 2018, and the new one we just put in was from 2018, must have fallen together.
Yeah, just been in storage.
Yeah, just sitting in the shop collecting dust, but it was good to have on hand, especially with all the high, high flow we've had.
Yeah.
So they installed it, and.
You only talking five days more. How he's hitting, where's your mic?
It's brand new. Yeah, we're just cracking. Just cracking that budget open.
Let's get three of them, man.
Do we need a motion on this?
I do need a motion on this.
I move we purchase, a new, uh, sub, to replace the old one from Quality Flow Systems in the amount of 12,980 dollars, plus tax, if any.
I have a motion by Trum. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Sukup, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? Motion carries. And then, last item under new business is the GIS contract renewal with HR Green. So this is a standing agreement that we have with HR Green. They help us to maintain our GIS database, which we are using for, I mean, they've located all the water service lines, and we've done the sewer work. They're helping us to relocate. We're going to ask them to help us get stormwater intakes on there, just so those are mapped out. So this is just the annual agreement, but because it's a contract, I wanted to bring it to council's attention. So the annual system updates and maintenance is 3,000 dollars. If we did need supplemental services and support, such as reaching out to them to maybe help us get these stormwater intakes mapped, that would be not to exceed 2,000 dollars. So there would be some additional time and material, in this case, just time, because I'm sure we can do it virtually. But they would not exceed 2,000 dollars. So this is a budgeted expense. They're supporting it today. We've not had any issues.
This is proving to be a valuable asset for the city, isn't it?
Oh, absolutely, especially as we've started sorting through paper, and you get into it, and you're like, um, I don't even know what's in here.
They've been easy to work with.
Yeah, they're very responsive. Um, we've not had any issues, but I can't imagine if we had to go back to paper maps and trying to flip through, and, and I'm, I'm sure we don't have everything from the paper maps on the GIS yet, but as we do projects and expand, it's been very valuable. So if there are no questions, I would seek a motion to approve the GIS contract renewal with HR Green for 3,000 dollars annual maintenance and up to 2,000 dollars for additional support. A motion by Myers, do I have a second?
There you go.
Second by Trum, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? Motion carries. We do not have any old business tonight, so that brings us to final comments. I will start with Counselor Trum.
Uh, nothing.
Counselor Bosenberg?
None.
Counselor Sukup? Counselor West?
Nothing.
Counselor Myers?
Nothing in this town.
All right, Mac, anything to add? Vicki? Uh, confirmation of date and time of next meeting is the second Thursday, so it'll be August 8th, 2024 at 7:00 PM for our regular council meeting. And I would see a motion, given that we've gone through our entire agenda, seek a motion to adjourn.
We adjourn.
Motion by Bosenberg, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by West, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? Motion carries, and we are adjourned at 8:07 PM.